A moment of silent reflection for everyone before we start our meeting. Thank you.
To the land of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Council Meeting of November 8, 2010. I'd be happy to, Mr. President, Consular Cameron.
President.
Consular Connell.
President.
Consular Cronin.
President.
Consular Darvin.
President.
Consular Earle.
President.
Consular Hartquist.
President.
Consular Hirsog.
President.
Consular Hutchinson.
President.
Consular Ives.
President.
Consular Jones.
President.
And Consul President O'Brien.
President.
Any late file items? We have one, Mr. President. We have an ordinance which should be on the Consular's desk. That is submitted by Consular Ives. There's a cover letter with it. It's with respect to transient vendors. And it is to delete a number of sections in Chapter 9 and to add over the same sections in Section 9 with some changes. Motion to suspend the rule, but the late file might be accepted. Accepted. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Going to regular agenda. Can I get a copy by then? Public comment, who's got the? We have fifteen people who have signed up to speak. So the limit is usually two minutes a speaker, so unless there's a motion by the floor, we will cut it down to a minute and a half, but up to the council. Who's motion? Okay. Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both? How many knows with that? Two knows, okay. Motion passes, so we'll just, people who speak, they have a minute and a half. I will try to be as generous as I can, which I have when some people speak over two minutes and go to three or four, but due to the large amount of people, you know, if some people take shorter time, I will let other people take longer if that's the case. So there is two or three things people want to talk about, so we'll go with the first one. Art Currier. The Stretch Code.
Thank you, and I will be long in twenty seconds now. But I am here to speak on the Stretch Code because the Green Communities Act, which is the essence of the Stretch Code, is something that is the future. And I believe Newburyport now can be in a leadership position along with nearly forty other communities in the Commonwealth to take advantage of the funding and support that it will provide for the community. So I hope you will support it and pass it this evening.
Andy Siffert.
Hello, everyone. My name's Andrew Siffert. I'm an architect, and I live in Newburyport. I've been practicing here for twenty years, and we specialize, one of the things we specialize is sustainable design. I was here to speak in favor of the Stretch Code, and I wanted to point out a few things that there's a lot of misnomers about what green design really involves, and in my opinion, it really involves just Yankee design. And so a lot of the things that we do to protect our clients and protect their investment is have them do things that are very logical, and one of them is have them to insulate their properties as well as possible. It's one of the most cost-effective ways to help the planet and their investments. And the Stretch Code is merely asking for some of the things that we've been complying with for years. This is just an opportunity to get a grant to do what we should be doing anyway, and much of us have been doing already. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Sarah Holden.
Sarah Holden. I've been in the construction industry for twenty-eight years, and I just wanted to say I heartily endorse the approval of the Stretch Code for Newburyport. Thank you.
Molly Attenborough.
Molly Attenborough, and City Recycling and Energy Coordinator, here again for the Stretch Code. I just wanted to thank you all very much for all the work that you've done. You've done a lot of research, you've talked to a lot of constituents, and I really appreciate that. But since our last meeting, a few things have been brought up. Some people have said that the Stretch Code is a tax. It's not a tax. They've said that the funds for the Green Communities Acts are derived from taxes. It's not derived from taxes. They're from the Regional Gas House Initiative, and that additions and new homes will cost tens of thousands of dollars. The main thing that this affects, our new home building. It does affect commercial buildings over five thousand square feet, but by adding costs to the mortgage, the increase in monthly costs are more than offset by the reduction in energy costs. So bottom line benefits, the city will receive grant money. It will also reduce energy costs in the buildings that it retrofits. It will benefit new homeowners because it will reduce their costs, and it's giving us an impetus to really focus on energy, benchmark what we're using, and produce future savings that could be used elsewhere in the city. Thank you for your consideration, and I hope you all will vote favorably tonight. Thanks.
Michael Strauss.
Mike Strauss, 56 Federal Street, Mr. President, City Council. I've been participating in the discussion on the Stretch Code for several months now, and there's been an unspoken question that threads its way through a number of the conversations, and that is, where did the Stretch Code come from? Who wrote this thing? And the implied answer is usually some evil cabal, but that's just not true. The Stretch Code, like all of our building codes, comes through the BBRS. That's the Board of Building Regulation and Standards. They're under the State Department of Safety. The people on the BBRS are mainly fire marshals and fire chiefs from around the state. Those are public safety officials. They're concerned with making our buildings safe. The rest of the members are from the construction industry, builders and contractors, architects, professional engineers, hydrologists, people whose livelihoods depend on a healthy construction industry in the state of Massachusetts. These are the people who bring us all of our building codes, including the Stretch Code. Of course, one might suppose that the energy conservation component of the Stretch Code, that the BBRS might listen to the sage advice of their volunteer energy advisory committee. But, and these folks are also from the construction industry. One of the members is Mel Fink. He's the co-chairman of the Massachusetts Home Builders Association. That's the primary professional trade and lobbying group of the builders and contractors in the state of Massachusetts. There are actually two seats on the energy advisory committee for the Massachusetts Home Builders Association. The rest, they're also builders and contractors, architects, professional engineers. So the construction industry, along with public safety, together bring us all of our building codes, including the Stretch Code. And they are intimately involved with every aspect of the development of all of our building codes. So in the end, this is all really about a simple thing. It's about adopting an updated building code a little bit ahead of schedule. In return, we get many benefits which will continue to accrue to the city long after the current building code is obsolete and has been replaced. I strongly urge you to vote in favor of adopting the Stretch Code. Thank you.
Fran Larkin. Back Bay parking.
Hi, everybody. Fran Larkin from 53 Hill Street in Newburyport, and I'm here in support of what's in committee to restrict the parking in the back bay, which is Hill Street, Cherry Street, Britcher, and support what the committee is going to recommend. I don't know what the final wording is going to be, but it will be resident parking only or no parking from eight to six, except for two hours, something to that effect. The reason is, we've been inundated in the past year and a half with what I call train people. Since the MBTA raised their prices from two to four dollars, we have fifteen to twenty cars on any given day right just at our end of the street. I counted fifteen today. So I'm in support of this for three reasons: safety, quality of life, and precedent. It's a narrow street. Parker Street is a lot wider than Hill Street, and we passed restrictions last year on that. In the winter, it's very narrow. We have one lane to get through in many parts of the street. I couldn't get out of my street the other day because there was a person right on the edge of the driveway, another person, train people, on the other side. You get out and you can't see. We have tons of kids in the neighborhood. We have riding their bikes, skateboarding, et cetera. It's also the main entrance for the city from the train. Lots of people are walking on that road. I left tonight to go to another meeting. There were seven people coming in on the 5:30 train. They're all walking in the road, and they're all in the middle. So it's a very dangerous situation. Quality of life, let me just read off some things. I have a ninety-three-year-old mother-in-law. She doesn't drive anymore, but she gets a ride. She's in a walker. Many times, she has to park way up the street. Next to us, we had, there's a couple in our duplex, he had terminal cancer. We've got hospice there, visiting nurses, his family. They can't park there. Across the street, we have a ninety-two-year-old mother. She can't get out because the cars are parked right in front of the cement walkway. She can't walk on the grass. We had one person this winter that parked their car, and it started snowing before the blue light came on. This person came back, shoveled the car off right on the walkway in that person's house. So these kinds of things go on. We had a delivery man last week. He couldn't back in to our driveway. The lady next to us is doing some renovations. There's a car right on the edge, a car across the street, backed over the lawn, took down a couple branches. We've had trash barrels that people put out on Tuesday morning, go to work early, two cars parked right in front of them, so the trash can't get picked up. I happened to be walking by, and I moved it. So it did get picked up. So last week, somebody parked on the grass, two feet up on the grass, put the ruts in, okay? And we've had overnight stays just in front of my house. I've seen it at least two times. They park, stay overnight, and come back. So those are some of the quality-of-life issues. The last one is precedent. Last December, we passed here Parker Street. Some of the issues raised were safety and the two cars on the road. Like I said, it's a wider road than Hill Street. Hill Street's residential. We also talked about the aesthetics last year. Somebody said, as you're driving into the, yep, as you're driving into the industrial park, you see all these cars. While as you're driving up Hill Street, you see all these cars. We also passed it in resident parking by the hospital for Arlington Street and Lafayette Street. So thank you for your consideration.
Kate Kelly.
Karen Kelly, 27 Hill Street. I'm just going to say ditto to Fran and just add that we have another situation when the buses or any large vehicle comes out of Britcher onto Hill, when the cars are parked across from it, sometimes the bus has to back up. We have called when that's happened. The Council on Aging van also had to back all the way downhill to Pond once because it couldn't just get through on the side there. So I really appreciate your consideration of this. I think it will really improve the quality of life for the train people as well as us. They have their problems getting in and out, too. Thank you.
Patty Spalding.
Hi, Patty Spalding, 5 Britcher Street. I basically am repeating what has been said before about the parking. I just want to reiterate that when Parker Street was going to be made no parking because of the whole commuter issue with the MBTA, a lot of things were investigated. They did attempt, I think Marshall Howard was going to try to speak with the MBTA, to no avail, to find parking for people. I personally want to say I have almost been hit head-on. My husband and I have almost been hit walking down Hill Street because the commuters get in their cars at the end of the day, and they just want to go home. And so I'm very fearful for the kids that are on their bikes in the neighborhood, and, you know, when the snow happens, there's just nobody is passing anything. We have curbing that have been flattened down on the corner of Britcher Street from the heavy vehicle traffic because they can't make the corner with all the commuters parked there. And I empathize with the commuters, but you know, the safety of this neighborhood needs to really be considered here. This was a residential neighborhood that did not have a medical building and did not have the commuter traffic that it has now, and this now has become a very, very bad safety issue. So I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Allison Trumper.
Hi, my name is Allison Trumper. I'm from Newburyport over off of Turkey Hill on Hawthorne Road, and I am here to talk about the meals tax, which several of you know that I'm absolutely opposed to. I have actually spoken with restaurant owners and people who frequent the restaurants downtown who are also very much against the meals tax. And in fact, I had a petition, and they're big, so could you pass them down? I've brought copies for you, so you can actually see the response from the people who eat, go out and eat in this town, and the response has just been unbelievable. And I think the reason is, the same reason that the tax on alcohol has been voted down. Ari was actually speaking about this on Thursday, about why the alcohol tax was shot down while the regular sales tax was not. Question one, question three. And I think that the voters in this town and the voters who come to this town to eat are absolutely opposed to one segment of the population being taxed over and above everyone else in this town. The taxes are high enough. It kind of, the people feel, and the best way to express this is, the people feel that same way that the radio ad, the guy who went into the store to buy the bear, and as he was walking out, he gets slapped in the face. People feel slapped in the face with the extra tax, and they just don't want it. I understand that Ward III needs new sidewalks. I absolutely understand that. Only half of this money will go to that. The rest of the money will go into the general fund. There will be no marketing program. There will be no aid to the schools. There will be no support for the rest of the people in the other five wards in this town who will all pay the increase in the meals tax. And I don't think it's the time or the place, and if the sidewalks need to be repaired, then there are other, better ways to do it. And that's all I have to say. So in your consideration, I hope that you vote no on the increase in the meals tax. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Michael Rowan, and I live in Newburyport, and I'm here because I oppose the meals tax. I oppose it because we don't need another tax. The money for sidewalks should already be in the budget. I think it's grossly unfair that certain businesses are going to have to pay a higher tax than others. Again, I think that the money should be already be in the budget. From what I understand with speaking with Senator Stephen Bedore, that Newburyport does receive state money for sidewalks, so Newburyport should be receiving this money. And this tax is going to affect everyone. The proponents of this tax want to make it out that if you go to some high-end restaurant, somebody out of town is going to pay for this. Whether anybody in this room goes to get a cheeseburger, a cup of coffee, a cup of tea at Starbucks or Fowles, wherever you go, you're going to pay for this tax. Like all taxes, they're done in small increments, and everybody says, oh, it's just going to cost you pennies a day. Well, you know what? That's, that doesn't pass anymore. The city needs to be financially responsible. The money should be in the budget for sidewalks, and we're not going to, we're not going to, if this does get passed, we got a lot of signatures without even trying. We will put this up for a vote, and not just a few people get to vote for it, a whole lot of people get to vote for it. We don't want our taxes raised. So thank you for your time, and please don't pass this.
Laura Allgrove.
Good evening. My name is Laura Allgrove. I live in Newburyport, and I, too, am opposed to this meals tax, mainly because I have friends that work in the restaurant industry. They're waiters, they're bartenders, and they are very concerned that if this meals tax goes through, they will not have the same customers coming in that they did. They rely mainly on their tips. That is their main source of income. And for myself, I'm a blue-collar worker. My paycheck has decreased through the years as the taxes have gone up, but I live in this town. I love it, and I do believe in supporting the local businesses. But if this tax goes through, it's another tax. It's more money out of my pocket, and I'm afraid I will not be able to support these businesses like I'm able to do. Thank you.
Sean Harrington.
Thank you. My name is Sean Harrington. I'm a resident of 14 Lincoln Street. I'm also a member of the Newburyport Parks Commission, and I am strongly in favor of this amendment to pass this meals and lodging tax. I really don't believe that the incremental increase will discourage any consumer behavior. I think over time, this city will have a real opportunity to broaden its revenue base as 115 other communities already have. We have real needs. We are not addressing our deferred maintenance, and I would say it's broader than sidewalks. And also, Ward One needs sidewalks, too. We have needs in our school. We have had devastating cuts to our school. We've eliminated foreign languages, as an example. We're not dealing at all with technology replacement, and in a world economy, that's somewhat of a disgrace. I think there's real return here, and I think you either use it for deferred maintenance, the schools, or property tax relief. You know, there's a whole host of reasons why you would do this, but it's time to diversify it. This is sound business.
Dana Walton, the owner of the Warren Street Market in Delhi. I just want to speak out against the tax. I think we're overly taxed as it is, and enough is enough, and it will affect business, whether it be pennies, a dime, or a dollar. It will affect business, so please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the time. Philip Cody, 9 Butler Street, proud fifteen-year resident of Newburyport. I am in favor of increasing the tax, a very small incremental change in people's, as my, as the gentleman before me attests, I do not believe there will be any substantial consumer behavioral change. And if anything, Newburyport is a destination city. Many people from outside of our community come here to visit. They will still come to visit. It's a beautiful and wonderful community. I believe that a marginal change in the rate will give our folks opportunity to improve the city sidewalks, I guess was one element, and also to get more money for the schools, albeit a small amount, to start on the road to recovery of better curriculum for our kids. It's a great city. We can make it better with an investment. Don't think of it as a tax. Think of it as an investment in our future for our children. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Bill Harris. I live at 56 Lamb Street, Newburyport. I have four points about the meals tax and the hotel tax. The first is that this year, and starting with this city council meeting, this council has an opportunity to diversify the tax base, which unfortunately has increasingly relied over the last thirty years on property taxes. Property taxes have gone from sixty-one percent of total expenditures in fiscal 1981 up to seventy-five percent the last two fiscal years. And this ends up dampening total values. It's self-defeating to just rely on property taxes. Part of it's not the city's fault, reductions in state aid, a lot of complications, but this, you need to diversify the tax base for the health, for the economic health of the city. Second point has to do with what these, why these proprietors should contribute somewhat extra to the infrastructure costs of the city. The fact are that most of our capital costs for the city come due to increasing peak demand. When people come in the summer, when we have to build out more parking, when we have to build more sewer capacity, when we need extra police or fire or DPS trash pickup, this is, these result from the peak demands we have in the city. And the fact is that our restaurant use, in part because we have great restaurants, do contribute to that, and they ought to pay some share of this extra burden. It shouldn't all be on the property owners. So the meals tax, which would go to seven percent from 6.25 percent, is still two percent less than what you'd get in New Hampshire. This is not like the vote on the alcohol tax. Here, we were really putting all of our sellers at a major disadvantage, and people did go across the state line, and it was a harm to our business owners. This is not the same with the meals tax. You go across the state line to get a meal, you pay two percent more tax. And with the hotels tax, I can show that I can't add. I sent an email that suggested that if you add the 5.7 percent of the state tax and go to 6 percent on the hotels tax, you go to 12.7, you go to 11.7 percent. That's still a substantial tax, but the facts are that these businesses do cause extra demand. Many of the sidewalks that have been repaired are by the areas where most of the restaurants are. So I believe it's reasonable to impose the 7 percent meals tax because that gives, that goes directly back, this extra tax all comes back to the city, unlike most state taxes. This comes right back to you. And same with the meals tax, with the hotel tax. So this is an opportunity, but I would recommend you delay, if you do it, the hotels tax for a year because I believe, from what I've seen, the restaurants have been recovering faster than the overnight hotels and inns. So it may not be popular, but this is an opportunity to diversify the tax base for the future financial benefit of the city. Thank you.
That's all who signed up for public comment. So move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda, I insist of the approval of the minutes for October 25, 2010. There are seven transfers. The seventh transfer has been removed. It will be taken up in the regular agenda. First transfer is health solid waste fee to Chipper Compost, $6,000. That's in for approval. Second transfer is sewer reserve appropriation insurance claims to sewer drain maintenance, $10,187.50. That's in for approval. The next three have to do with the ASME contract. Mayor free cash to salaries, $43,000, 531.91. That's to be referred to Budget and Finance. Next is water retained earnings to water salaries, labor, $13,000, 699.63. Again, Budget and Finance. Transfer number five, sewer retained earnings to sewer salaries, labor, $16,000, 523.94. Again, Budget and Finance. Last transfer is mayor free cash to veterans' benefits, $20,500. That's in for approval. Transfer number seven, as I've said, has been removed. Communications, there are five. The fifth one has been removed. It will be taken in the regular agenda. Communication number one is the Northeast Chapter cystic fibrosis, fibrosis, Seacoast Safari Two-Day Bike Tour, 716 and 717. That's for 2011. That's to be referred to public safety. Second communication is the Newburyport Retirement Board, expense budget for FY 2000, calendar year 2011, to be received and filed. Communication number three, election officer by declaration of the retirement board, to be received and filed. Communication number four, Anna Jake's Hospital request for Bartlett Mall, a 50-yard dash on November 26, 2010. That's to be approved. And as I said, communication number five has been removed. And appointments, there are none, so that's the consent agenda as amended.
Senator, Mr. President, actually, just regarding the minutes. The first committee item from Budget and Finance relative to the Charter Commission transfer, it says here in approval with the addition that any transfer, it says here, "In approval with condition that any correspondent..."
What page is it on?
Page 13, or, page 13 of the... It's the last page of the, it's the second-to-last page of the minutes.
Page five of the minutes.
Page five. It says here, "In approval with the condition that any correspondent," that should be recommendation that any correspondent.
We've made a change.
Anything else? Consent agenda in the minutes has...
Motion approved as amended.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Foe? Full mark. The regular agenda.
Transfer number seven, Mr. President?
Yes.
Lot of emergency management transfer from EM expenses, $23,750. Transfer to EM Coordinator, $10,000, to EM Deputy Coordinator, $2,500, to EMI Maintenance of Building, $3,000. Miss Landy's expense, $1,000. Fuel, oil, $250, and EMI Utilities, $7,000.
Motion to refer to General Order?
Second.
Mr. President, I'll withdraw my motion.
Thank you.
If you withdraw your second, then I'll move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Are there none? All in favor?
Aye.
Foe?
No.
Got two noes? Counsel Earl, Counsel Herzog. We'll go to communication number six, number five.
A couple letters from the mayor to the president and members of the council. I'm requesting your approval to fund a contract with Mr. George Woodbury of Republic ITS to assist the city in the Energy Advisory Committee on the street lighting assets from National Grid. Payment would be allocated from the energy rebate reserve appropriation account, an amount of $130 per hour, estimated not to exceed $10,000, without prior agreement from both parties, and to be paid in one lump sum at the end of the project. Balance in this account is currently $396,000. Contract is attached for your perusal, and you'll see the consulting agreement during the sitting of George Woodbury.
Motion.
Motion to refer to Public Utilities and Neighborhood Services.
Second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Foe? Public Safety Service.
Public Utilities.
Public Utilities and Neighborhood Services.
I'm in discussion. Go plug in the second reading, I'm sorry.
There would be a second reading for the reappointment of Tina Bouchere, 19 Mudknock Road, Salisbury, Mass., as Animal Control Officer to expire May 1, 2011.
Motion approved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Foe? Honest.
First order is, dated November 8, the City Council of the City of Newburyport approves the following Drain Layer Utility Contractor Application for 2010 Construction. Gibbs Construction, Frank Gibbs, 87, Smith Corner Road, Newton, New Hampshire, submitted Kathleen O'Connor eyes.
Motion approved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just briefly wanted to distinguish why we are in favor of an approval of this one, where last council meeting, it was sent to committee, and that was because the documents which included proof of insurance and letters of recommendation weren't in the previous packet, which is good to review in Public Utilities Committee, and all of it was included tonight.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Foe? Lot of carries? Lot of noes? Two?
Dated November 8, the City Council of the City of Newburyport accept the provisions of MGL C-59, Section 5K, for the purpose of entitling eligible senior citizens over the age of 60 to receive a maximum benefit of $1,000 off their property tax bills, in exchange for providing volunteer service to the city at a rate no more than the current minimum wage of the Commonwealth. This program is to be administered by the mayor's office in conjunction with the Council on Aging, submitted council...
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion? Counsel Herzog.
Thank you, Mr. President. In your agendas, there is an explanation, quick, actually, clarification to just one item, it's actually a maximum benefit of $1,000, I inadvertently written $970. This is a, this is a program, back in 1996, the city council helped create a program to allow seniors in our community to receive a tax rebate, a tax refund, in exchange for volunteering to provide service to the municipal departments. This was adopted by the city four years before the state adopted a similar program allowing higher limits, higher benefits, if you will. Ever since then, whenever the state legislation has been updated, the city has followed suit and amended our own legislation. The last order that the city council approved was in 2007, the fall of '07, when the state maximum benefit was $750. Now it's been updated again to $1,000, and I ask your approval on that. Currently, there are 15 seniors participating in the program every year. There's approximately 13 to 18 seniors. It's funded out of a line item in the mayor's budget, in the fiscal 11 budget, which we approved earlier this year, it's $13,500. It's up to the mayor's office and the Council on Aging to determine administration, and pretty self-explanatory. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Foe?
First, I'm in discussion.
First ordinance, second reading, April 26, 2010. General Ordinance Amendment, Stretch Energy Code. City hereby votes to adopt a Stretch Energy Code as set forth in State Building Code at 780 CMR 120 dot AA. As may be amended from time to time, and to amend the City of Newburyport General Ordinance, it's by inserting a new Section 5-65. In Chapter 5, Buildings and Building Regulations, Article 3, Building Construction Standards entitled Stretch Energy Code, as set forth below. 5-65, 5-65-1. Adoption, City of Newburyport has adopted the provisions of 780 CMR 120 dot AA, as may be amended from time to time, as previously stated. Purpose. Purpose of the Stretch Energy Code shall be to provide the city with more energy-efficient alternative to the base energy code otherwise set forth under the State Building Code. Full text available in the clerk's office, submitted Barry N. Canell.
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Motion approved, second reading, the Stretch Energy Code. Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes. Excuse me, can I do something? Steve? It's kind of quick on the discussion, we wanted, sorry, we missed the discussion.
Counsel Highterson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Back a few years ago, I voted for wind turbine, attempt to be green, and I regretted it ever since because of the effects it had on our neighborhood. And I have no problem with stretch code itself, as it stands by itself, but as it allows us to go into the Green Communities' designation with the state, what I'm concerned with is we're giving up some kind of right to reject unwanted uses in the industrial park. And I've been trying for the last two weeks, I've met with the planning director, to try to be a little more reassured on not losing that kind of say, because I don't want to be in that position again. I really haven't had that resolve still to this date, to the best of my ability, to really feel comfortable voting for this, if there's any possibility that someone could go into the industrial park that we don't want there, because we took grant money from the state in the attempt to be green. So I thought there'd be more discussion tonight about some of that, so I just wanted to open up in case there was.
Mr. President, I, too, had similar concerns. Quite frankly, I still have some. I met with the planning director as well, and I guess the best way I can put this is that I have to defer to the professionals in the building, and that's Andrew Port. I am concerned that this stretch code does trigger the Green Communities Act, as Counsel Hutchinson said. And I'm also concerned that the letter going into the state regarding the entire process encompasses three zones in the industrial park. One of those zones was recently changed by this council, or previous council, to create a buffer between the residents, specifically of the back bay, and the industrial park. And both Mr. Port and I had conversation about this, and he was hoping, and I'm hoping, that we can move in that direction without really hurting the initiative itself. He was giving me the insurances, so I am going to vote for this, but with a lot of trepidation. I want to make sure that the residents aren't put in a position yet again where they're fighting for their property rights with one hand tightly on their back.
Counsel Connell?
Just two comments. One, I appreciate Counsel Crone and Counsel Hutchinson's concerns. Having spoken with both of them prior to tonight's meeting, I'm perfectly willing to sit down and assist you, and look over the shoulder of the planning director to craft the language regarding our participation, our intent to participate in these programs, in such a manner that satisfies those concerns. But let me also point something out, and I just got it in the mail today, we all get a copy of the Municipal Advocate, the Mass Municipal Association. This is the association of like individuals who've been elected or appointed by their communities to serve in capacities like this body, to represent the best interests of their communities. I don't think there's anybody in this room who would call the Mass Municipal Association a wild-eyed or imprudent organization. It's very stable, it's very staid, it's very conservative, it's extremely protective of the rights of municipalities. There's an article in the Municipal Advocate that we just received that speaks to the issue of the stretch code and what it means. And I would point you to read that, and see if you can find even the hint or suggestion of anxiety on the part of the communities that have already participated, or the staff of the Mass Municipal Association that researched and composed that article. I guess what I'm saying is, there are people who are also with us, looking out for the interests of their communities, who have been through this process. There are 45 such communities in the state right now who are already enrolled. And their experience has been almost universally, and I say almost because I can't speak for all of them, I can only speak to those whose testimony is either presented through the Mass Municipal Association, whose testimony was gathered through the auspices of our own energy committee in this city. And their testimony, as Counsel Herzog so correctly pointed out in our last meeting, has been favorable. They point out the advantages of involvement in this program. They look at the sorts of things that they can do today that they couldn't do without having enrolled in. And so is this hard evidence? No. But it is testimony in favor of passing the stretch code, embracing the Green Communities Act, and taking advantage of not just the money, but the concept of improving the quality of the housing stock in our city, and ensuring that in the future, it sustains its value in good times and in bad. And so I would encourage you to vote in favor of that, and again, the offer to help craft that letter stands, and I look forward to working with you on it. Thank you.
This evening, we're specifically voting on the stretch code, and I definitely appreciate the related concerns, because the Green Communities Act is a package with five different items in order to qualify for the grant monies. And previously, my chief concern was the as-of-right siding, because it was still unclear when we first took a vote on this, in terms of what it really meant for us. And especially as a council without that immediate access to legal counsel, that left us kind of in this vague spot where, like Counselor Hutchinson, I didn't want to have anything happen to us again, where things moved quickly, and then, you know, because we want the best for constituents, we're trying to undo what we did. So it's my understanding, and when I conclude here, I'll ask Andy Port if my conclusion is correct, my understanding is that we cleared up the issue of as-of-right siding, because our city solicitor confirmed that the zoning that we currently have is the exact same thing. Now, mind you, I am always suspicious of what the difference is between as-of-right siding and the sign that we already have, because if we already have it, then why is it specifically titled something else that seems to make us feel like our sovereignty is compromised? I'm very protective of that. I don't like outside forces limiting our independence and telling us what to do and what's right for our specific needs, especially in the industrial park near a residential area. I'm going to pose that question to our planning director, and before I do, I think that the common thread between this and the stretch code is that I think that we need to support this, I will be voting for it this evening, but keep in mind that we need to, with a new planning director, do things after the fact that make it appropriate for us. So in terms of the stretch code this evening, I spoke about it at the last city council meeting during the first reading, and my specific concern with that was how does it affect renovations and construction pertaining to historical homes? And I expressed an interest before this kicks in in July, that we use that opportunity to make sure that our historical inventory of housing is adequately protected, and the implementation of this is actually sufficient, because really, this is a document, but it's all about implementation once it hits the road. So if you could just assuage our concerns about the as-of-right siding, because I know that folks are thinking, if I vote for this, it's one more check on the to-do list for the Green Communities Act.
Well, thank you. For the record, Andrew Port, planning director for the city. I met with this the other day, actually, with Counsel Crone and Counsel Hutchinson. I didn't bring a large-scale version of the zoning map, but we all know the districts, the I-1, I-1B zoning districts, these purple areas here. What the letter from council to the state says is that, in essence, that we already allow manufacturing and research and development facilities in those areas. There's nothing that's changing about that. That is essentially what the state is requiring underneath this Green Communities Act. They make reference to renewable energy resources, but those renewable energy businesses could already go into our industrial park based on that research and development and the manufacturing provision. So they're already allowed to go in there as a use. The use is not a question, it is permitted as a use. There are site plan requirements, and those things are still underneath the purview of the local board. There is a permitting process in which they go through. That gives a level of control to the city and maintains that level of control of the city. But the state has asked that, and this is not inconsistent with our current zoning, that there be allowed as a use. There's no question whether those uses are appropriate. Given that they're an industrial area, clearly that's what presumably the city had wanted years ago, when they adopted that type of zoning. There's, as far as the expedited permitting, the letter also addresses the timeframe for which that happens. The state has clarified expedited, quote, expedited permitting as being a year, meaning that the applicant comes in, they're entitled to a decision within a year. Frankly, I think that's much longer than it really needs to be, and most communities have responded to that, saying, well, that's crazy, that's a very long time. But we already, well, we're well short of that timeframe in which we're able to make a decision on applications, so we have no threat of going over that year, and our council letter to the state verifies the timeframe in which we take in applications, advertise for hearings, hold the hearings, and then close the hearings, and then issue a decision, and that that happens well short of a year. So the letter which was sent into the state, they've received it, they've said they had no complaints about our argument, our explanation of why our zoning doesn't need any changes. And so to reiterate, in summary, what I've discussed with some of you over the last, you know, couple of weeks, is there should be a very solid level of comfort with the expedited permitting and as-of-right use issue, because you are making no changes as council to the zoning, the zoning will stay as it is, there's no need to change that, and the Green Communities Act, whether or not you adopt the stretch code, which I think is a good idea, the Green Communities Act does not override local zoning, doesn't change any of that, if there was any desire and any need to change zoning... If there was any desire and any need to change zoning, it would again come back to you. So you should rest, you know, comfortable knowing that the zoning is, as you've previously adopted it and amended it till today, and any changes to it would have to come back to you. If there are any other questions about the accuracy of review in the industrial areas or in your office in the city, that's a point where we can work on amendments in the future, as is always done, you know, zoning is always adaptive over time. We can work on changes like that that might be desired by the council. But if there's some concern that this is going to change zoning or have an impact on it, this does none of that, it just verifies to the state what our current zoning says.
I'd just like to thank you, Mr. President, for allowing the discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to reassure my fellow councils that are nervous about this, that clearly nondiscretionary discretionary zoning rules are clearly understood by the city solicitor. That would be the same city solicitor that assured us that, for example, Cushing Park wasn't really a park, or that betterments for water and sewer would withstand the test of the court, or, you know, ad nauseam. We can count on the state working cooperatively with us. Ask anyone that's, you know, on the butter of the landfill, out of Crowley. I can see where we've been reassured effectively by the people who are professionals here, that the state has our best interests at heart, and that they would never use the monetary purse strings that they're dangling before us to change what it is that we would allow or not allow in our discretionary nondiscretionary zoning district. So if you're, you know, if you're reassured now that discretionary nondiscretionary rulings and the powers and benevolence of the state of Massachusetts are the Commonwealth of the Tenfold Wisdom, Department of Energy Environmental Protection has our best interests at hearts, I'll certainly be voting no on this one.
Thank you, Mr. President. Molly Attenborough, you made a comment during the public comment about if this wasn't from tax money. Can you, did you say that?
Yeah, the money for the grant. The money for the grants, it's from the Regional Greenhouse Gas Emissions, it's called Regi. And those are emissions auction permits. That's what funds the grants.
Okay, so that's not a per se tax?
No, it's not a tax to cities, it's what industry pays for their emissions, their carbon emissions.
Thank you.
Made by Counselor Connell, seconded by Counselor Earls.
Now we'll have a roll call.
Roll call. Motion to approve the stretch code, ordinance number one. Counselor Cameron. Counselor Connell.
Yes.
Counselor Cronin.
Yes.
Counselor Darvin.
No.
Counselor Earls.
Yes.
Counselor Harkwitz.
Yes.
Counselor Hirsarg.
Yes.
Counselor Hutchinson.
No.
Counselor Ives.
Yes.
Counselor Jones.
No.
Counselor O'Brien.
Yes.
Three no, motion passes. Ordinance number two is the late file. I do. It's a cover letter submitted by Counselor Ives, addressed to the president, members of city council. Please excuse the late file ordinance, this proposed amendment came about through my discussions with the New Report License Commission related to transient vendors. License Commission currently holds the authority to issue licenses to transient vendors. However, is the desire of the License Commission to have the city council, through its license and permits committee, review applications for transient vendors and issue licenses for use of public sidewalks and ways. Such a change requires amending the current transient vendor ordinance. Amendment has been submitted as late filed, because the License Commission typically accepts transient vendor applications in November, but has issued a memo during the November meeting stating that they will no longer take action on applications until it is determined whether the city council is amenable to reviewing these applications for licenses. I'd like to accept, I'd like the council to accept the late file this evening, so that we may take action on the matter. Thank you sincerely, Counselor Ives. Ordinance itself deletes maybe 10 or so sections. It deletes Division One generally and Division Two transient vendors. In its place, it adds Sections nine, 11, 111, 112, 113, 131, 132, 133, 134, 135, 6, 7, 138, 140, and 141. I think it's much too long for me to read. Unless you would like me...
Motion to approve a license of transit.
Second. Any discussion? Counselor Ives.
The cover letter said it most succinctly, but just for a tiny bit of context, License Commission has been the current reviewer of folks that are interested in being transient vendors, so in the business district mainly, folks that are typically selling food and things like that. But where the city council generally has its role in approving the use of municipal sidewalks and ways, it's a natural fit to transition that, and it's the request of the License Commission to transition that responsibility. So with that in mind, I'd ask for your support in letting license and permits consider this language. And it is fairly lengthy, but the changes really pertain to the insertion of city council where it currently says License Commission.
Yeah, I don't want to blabber this tonight, but I sure hope the committee's going to look at the appropriate role of this branch of government versus the subcommittees, or boards, or commissions, or authorities of the city to make decisions like this. Does this city council want to be bogged down considering every vendor license that comes before it? I just, and I'm trying to understand what about vendor licenses is so offensive to the License Commission that they can't deal with those referrals and act on them appropriately? So I guess there's an awful lot that's in my head, and I hope to attend the committee meeting on this so you can clarify the misunderstanding.
Just to very briefly respond, and we will delve into this in the committee, I think that in terms of our role, since we're the legislative body, one factor for consideration overall as a public policy issue is whether we, as a city, should reduce the overall number of vendors licenses which are distributed specifically in the downtown area. And I've been approached by various year-round businesses who are concerned because they're struggling, and they're here year-round, they've invested in real estate and, you know, slow winter times and off-peak seasons. And the question is, why are transient vendors issued licenses at very low rates during these difficult times? And I think that this policy decision really should be something that the city council should consider.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counselor Ives, I also look forward to attending these meetings. I'm just curious if you can, if you can share approximately how many transient vendors does the License Commission currently approve or deny on a given year?
Currently, the ordinance allows for three transient vendors licenses to be issued, but as a practical matter, this past season, there were three issued downtown, and there were two issued outside of the business district.
Anything else? Motion to approve the license and permits? On the table?
Aye.
Both?
One, two, committee items. But anything coming out of budget finance? That's the camera.
Yes, Mr. President. Lecture removed from committee. This is a new item, and it's entitled, "An Ordinance to Amend an Ordinance Entitled Streets, Sidewalks, and Other Public Places," and I have copies for my colleagues. So I'd like to make a motion to remove this from committee.
A second motion.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both?
No.
Is that one no? One no, ten yes.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance that was just brought out of committee.
A second.
Discussion?
Please.
Discussion?
If the maker isn't going to kick this off, I'll take a...
He was going to read it.
I'm sorry. Well, it's short. Section 12-9 sidewalk maintenance. City New Report shall appropriate the sum of $210,000 each fiscal year for the purpose of maintaining and repair of existing city-owned sidewalks. Maintenance of this city sidewalk shall be conducted in order to ensure that the city meets its obligations of other sections of Chapter 12 and the Revised Code. Funds shall be distributed among the six wards in a responsible and equitable manner. Fund for the maintenance and repair of the condition of sidewalks shall be included in the municipal budget. Sources for the funding may be derived from any source available to the city of New Report so allowed by local, state, and federal regulations.
Mr. President, basically what we discussed in committee, this obviously relates to the establishment of the local meals tax and the increase to the lodging tax. And the reason this is being approached this way is, the thought is that if counselors knew where some of the money was going to that would possibly be generated if we adopted those two local excise taxes, that at least you would have more comfort in what you were voting on. So basically, this is targeting what would be estimated to be an excess of $300,000 that would be generated annually from a local meals tax and an increase to the local lodging tax. This would target half of that money, roughly. And this really generates from Counselor Cronin's amended ordinance from September, where he proposed taking 50% of the new revenues and applying that to sidewalk repair. The thought in committee was, rather than have a fluctuating amount year to year based on, you know, revenue that you could never predict until the end of a fiscal year, that we would put a firm amount. So basically, we're taking the $60,000 that the council has appropriated through ordinance back in 2008, we voted in September. Back then, we had $30,000 a year that was allocated towards sidewalk repair. We increased that for fiscal year '09 to $60,000. And I remember many conversations on late nights, how we all acknowledged how little that was. And this would add $150,000 to it, to bring that total to $210,000. And one other language change in here which is bolded there, we had a discussion about whether this revenue could be used for creating new sidewalks, or whether it would be repairing the existing sidewalks. And we brought out of committee that it would be for existing sidewalks, that we needed to do a much better job of maintaining what we have in all wards, not just Ward Three, but in all wards of the city, that this would also certainly be used downtown as well, but that there really would be a big benefit for neighborhoods here. So that's why this is brought out in this order, not the meals tax and the local lodging tax first. But again, you know, my sense from the several meetings that we had, which included council of the whole, some counselors favored very specific targeting, others wanted it all for the general fund, some were opposed to the tax wherever it was, wherever it was going to go. So at least this is more, I think, more transparent, perhaps a little more confusing, but a little more transparent, that you will know, you know, again, if we vote in favor of those tax increases, where the money would go to. And just because this really does get to the other two questions that are going to be brought out of committee, you know, I know there's been a lot of, you know, vocal opposition to this, and I thank Allison and her husband Jason for really doing a lot of work and trying to get, you know, public input and people to sign their names to a piece of paper about this, because I think that just shows how valuable, you know, how important this is to people. However, I do think there's broad-based support for this across the community. It may not be as vocal as some of the opponents, but I do think there's broad-based support. We've heard from a number of folks here. You know, it's not just a question of, you know, finding the money in the budget for sidewalks. We know there is money in the sidewalk budgets, because we've gone through it with a fine-tooth comb, at least in the three budgets that I've been involved in. It's not in the budget, it's not going to be in the budget in fiscal year 12, which is going to be a worse year than what we just got through. We were very fortunate in this community to get through that last fiscal year, FY11, and we're doing okay at the moment, but it is going to get tougher. We've seen, you know, over 30 less teachers in schools over the last five years, we've seen 40 less, excuse me, 20 less DPW workers over the last 20 years. We're down to 21 workers that are doing a lot of the repairs that we kind of take for granted in terms of infrastructure and deferred maintenance. Police are very tight in their scheduling. Fire, we know from the last budget cycle, we were going to lose four firefighter positions. We were able to pull some money from the stabilization fund to save those. That's going to be at risk this year. The library, we had an enormous outcry when we were talking about cutting $58,000 from the library budget. So I think we've got big holes and we've got big needs. I think sidewalks is one, that we can make an impact with this limited revenue stream. The things I think we're going to need to look for as a council in the upcoming budget are around efficiencies, around pension and healthcare. We're going to have to take some more look at shaving some costs there and working with the state to give us more authority around plan design. I think we're going to have to continue to work constructively with the unions on either zero or very low increases to salary, along with concessions in other areas. So I think we face a very difficult fiscal challenge moving forward. The way that this money's being raised, you know, if we were in East Overshue, Massachusetts...
Counselor Cameron.
Yes.
Is this your report on sidewalk maintenance?
Yes, Mr. President.
Getting into, in my opinion...
Okay, got your question.
I've been wrong many times, so getting into other issues.
I will stop.
I just have a couple of things on sidewalk maintenance. We're talking $210,000. So what if the meals tax doesn't pass? Just pay devil's advocate. Why are we bringing this first?
I think I will then make a motion to undo it if it doesn't pass.
Why don't we just table this? Someone will table this, and we can bring it up later. And if the meals tax passes, we can, then we go on to, because the way I read it, if we don't, we're telling the city's got to put $210,000 in the budget for sidewalks, and if we don't have the money coming in, future we're worship last year, wait till next year. That's just my opinion. Counselor Arizona?
Thank you, Mr. President. Before we table it, I have the biggest advantage for promoting our sidewalks and for fixing our sidewalks, for finding money to fix our sidewalks. But subsequent to the last Budget and Finance Committee meeting, I've had conversations with our city auditor, as well as our mayor. And my understanding, and the auditor is in the room, my understanding is that this ordinance, we can't pass it.
That's why I want to table it.
Okay.
I need a motion to table. Second motion to table one.
Second.
And now we can move on. Anything else coming up, we'll bring this up later in the meeting. Anything else coming on budget finance, local meals, rural occupancy, or if you want to take the salaries for us?
I'd like to take the local meals tax, committee.
The second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Go ahead.
Motion to remove the local lodging tax from committee.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both? Go ahead. I'm going to get a motion to...
A motion to approve the amended ordinance regarding sidewalks. And I think you've already heard my speech.
What?
Oh, I'm sorry.
What order? There was a motion, there was a motion to table, and there was a second. However, we still leave a majority vote on the table, no discussion. All in favor of the table?
Aye.
Both? Majority. Counselor Jones. What is before us, Mr. President? There was a motion to remove, remove from rural occupancy the local meals excise tax. It was removed, it hasn't been, nothing else has happened. It's just been removed.
Both have been removed.
Both have been removed. There's no other motion on the floor, to best my knowledge. Counselor Cameron.
A motion to approve the local meals excise.
Second.
Discussion?
Counselor Darvin.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, we heard a lot of comments from folks tonight. And, you know, I just incremental tax, and it's small, and it's this, and it's that, and, you know, a hundred dollars, and seventy-five dollars, it's not so much, you know, listen, that's not going to stop me from going out. But it's the principle of it. It's the principle of it. Just because we can, so we will. I don't think that's right. There were some other comments made tonight by some folks that were talking about diversifying the tax base. You get that, right? This tax base is going to be really diversified in a couple more months. When paid parking's coming at you, you've got this tax coming at you, and God knows what else is going to be coming at us. As for a statement that was made regarding diversified tax base and the property owner, the restaurant owners, and things like that, that they should be paying their fair share of infrastructure, of taxes, well, guess what? They do. They do pay taxes. If they own the property, they pay a property tax. If they have sewage and water coming in, they pay a fee for it. And if they're renting, guess what? It's built into that fee. So don't think that you want to spread around the tax because you think that these people aren't paying for it. Well, guess what? They are. And then we end up paying for it, too. Incremental tax, one by one, it keeps stacking up, and where the hell do we stop? Where do we stop? You know, enough is enough. We have to stop shoving everything down to people's throats. And it has to end now. And I urge you all to not go with this tonight. Thank you.
Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. As some of you may remember, some of you were here a few years ago, when we tried to ask the state, Councilor Tobin in Boston actually started the initiative to ask the state to let us keep one percent of the existing tax. And we signed a resolution asking for that. That didn't go anywhere. I guess the state wants all their money, and they gave us the option of adding additional taxes to try to make up for it so we can keep some of the money ourselves, which I don't agree with for a lot of the reasons that Counselor Darrell had just mentioned. People seem to gloss over when they talk in favor of the meals tax and hotel tax, that there's no potential parking revenue coming. That's something we haven't had before, and could be potentially a lot of money. So to lump both things together and vote for both things in the same year, I think it's too much in this economy for local businesses and for the residents and the people to pay. So I won't be supporting this tonight myself. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I'd just like maybe a little clarification. And it may go back to the table item slightly, but it does influence my vote. So I would ask for a clarification from either Counselor Herzog or Auditor Squillis about what was kind of suggested that the two hundred and ten thousand dollar sidewalk initiative is a moot point.
The ordinance would still be subject to the funding support of the mayor. Auditor Squillis and I, he has several conversations with city councilor Dior. The money generated from the two local options must go into the general fund. They can't be earmarked to a certain cause through the use of an ordinance. If you chose to pursue that path, you could file a home rule petition with the legislature. That's what the town of Barnstable is currently doing. But again, if you pass the ordinance, just please consider in your deliberations that it would be subject to the support of the mayor.
You know, I put this forward as a suggestion to the council and to the government, the city government of Newburyport, that people in this community were very much in favor of a green community, a walking community. We just passed a stretch code, which triggers the Green Communities Act. We want to turn streetlights off to save money. We want to, we want people to walk downtown. We want bike racks. We want this, we want that. You can't walk on the sidewalks in Newburyport for fear of getting injured. This was a way, in my humble opinion, that brought money back into the residential neighborhoods of all six wards to give something back to the residents who solely need something from this community. They've been ignored countless times. If this meals tax money is going into the black hole of city government, sorry, it's a no vote for me today, every day. We need a mechanism to show the residents of this city that we're doing something for them. When I went around, you know, obviously, I'm a first-time counselor, I went around knocking on the doors of every person in my ward. To a fault, the number one complaint was city sidewalks, especially this time of year. You've got leaves, and by the way, we don't pick up leaves anymore. You have leaves in the potholes, so you're safer running in the street, you're safer walking in the street. All I'm saying is that this council and this city as a whole has to recognize what the citizens of this city demand out of its government. And this really puts me in a tough position, because if I vote yes for this, and then it goes down on the earmark, I'm not going to be able to sleep for the next two months, and I'm going to have to take a shower soon as I go home. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It's time that the people of this city government do something for the people.
Counselor Hunter.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. On behalf of Ward One, I will be voting in favor of this. Like Allison, I also did a survey. I didn't do a petition, but I did a survey. I sent out a hundred and fifty emails to Ward One residents. I received eighty responses. Seventy-one percent came back in complete favor very strongly. I've summarized the top five or six responses. The first one is you have the option to participate or not. Another one is how many people coming to Newburyport even know what the existing meals tax is? Money should go to the downtown area, which is generating the revenue. Money should go to a specific need that would benefit the city as a whole. And it's a good way to get money from the tourists to help out with the downtown. However, although I am, like Sean said, I am very eager to have sidewalks in Ward One, I also can't forget to, I don't know, talk about education. We have a great city. We have a great waterfront. We have great restaurants, a great downtown. We even have a great beach. Our schools are good. I would really like to see very good schools. Great, I know, is reaching, but very good schools would make me sleep at night. So with that said, on behalf of Ward One, I think they've spoken loud and clear. I will definitely be voting in favor of this meals tax. Thank you.
Counselor Adams.
I was, I took for granted. I thought that I knew how this would play out this evening, because I was going to vote for the hotels meal tax, no-brainer, because the Budget and Finance Committee, for months, has held meetings discussing the concept of designating a certain amount of money to the maintenance of our city sidewalks on a ward-by-ward fair manner. And I feel like there's foul play tonight, because even the chair of Budget and Finance was not made aware that this was not an option until this evening. So I was under the impression that, and I really liked the concept of thinking about, before we had a general vote on the full meals tax, having it be more understandable and fair for the council to know what they were voting for at the end of the day, because we would vote on the proposed designation for a certain amount. And I guess I'll finish up so that you can... Oh, you want to...
I'm just raising my hand.
Okay, I thought you wanted to speak immediately. And then we would in turn have an informed vote in terms of how those monies would be used. I agree with Counselor Hardquest that education is a definite need. And with that in mind, I wasn't in support of the whole revenue being applied toward city infrastructure, and understood that the remaining portion would go into the general fund at the discretion of the mayor, because I know the mayor appreciates the situation with our school funding. But I feel like this question has been before us for a very, very, very long time. And if it was the position of the mayor's office to use this mechanism of a home rule petition, to use the money for targeted spending on city sidewalks, then we would have created some type of memorandum of understanding between the council and the mayor's office during this entire time period, and that doesn't exist. So I'm going to assume that no money will be used for that purpose, and we'll still be stuck with the sixty thousand dollars that we currently have in our budget, which does not go far at all. So with that in mind, I look forward to some more clarification and discussion right now, because I'm very confused as to why, right now, in real time, we're learning about how this is not an option.
Counselor.
I had no idea that insomnia was such a serious issue among members of the city council. You know, Anna Jakes was here earlier. They have a sleep program over there. Maybe we could take advantage of it. I'd just like to remind councilors, and I had come tonight anticipating voting in favor of the tax, as I've told people publicly before, and to anyone who's caught me on the street corner or outside the chambers or wherever they seem to find me. But let me remind my colleagues, and I agree very much with the intent of Counselor Cronin to earmark, or at least to make certain, to the extent that we can at this time, that we increase the amount that is spent on the streets and sidewalks, particularly the sidewalks of the city, which are in deplorable condition. I completely agree with that. When I read this amendment tonight, I had a thought, the first thing I wrote down was a question of legality of that, because it does presume to constrain the executive in the preparation of the budget. However, the budget comes to us, and we make the choices about where to move the pots of money in that budget before we send it back and approve it for the mayor.
We cannot add.
We cannot add, no. But we can, at that time, negotiate. And that's the time, if eleven councilors express strong concern about the amount of money that's going into sidewalks, and I don't know if we have all eleven of us feeling the same way, but I certainly agree with you, then that's the time to do it. Now, is there anything we can do tonight to assure one another that that's the case? I don't know. I don't think that there is a formal mechanism for doing so. But before we throw this out, because this particular, throw this idea of a rooms or meals tax out the window, because we don't have the formal assurance or the legal mechanism to encumber the money now, let's keep in mind that come June, as we're preparing the budget, that is the time when we can make reasonably certain that this money, or a significant portion of the money that might be collected, is earmarked for the sidewalks and for the public infrastructure that we all seem to think is important. I also, upon reflection, think that, you know, that Counselor Hardquest is entirely correct. The schools do need more attention. I don't think that it is possible for us to earmark any of this money for the schools any more than we could earmark it tonight for the sidewalks and the infrastructure in the downtown area. That's my comment.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just regarding what Mr. Squillis said, this was brought to the committee several meetings ago, and perhaps Counselor Herzog wasn't there for that. It was made very clear to me by Auditor Squillis and with the mayor's assistant that there is no guarantee in stone. But we've had this sixty thousand dollar amount in there for the last three fiscal years, and to me, it is no different than what we've done in terms of past practice. I completely agree with what Counselor Connell is saying. At budget time, if we have this as a marker, two hundred and ten thousand dollars, and if this mayor or a future mayor says, well, gee, I really don't want to do that, and the council, you know, again, as Mr. President said, the council is up for, our charter can't add amounts, but if we have that marker there, and we can say this is how the money's been raised, and that's how we're going to fund this very specific need, I think that is going to be, you know, that's the way it's going to be for the next, you know, many, many years. As time goes on, in five years or in ten years, I mean, maybe our needs are different, maybe there are other ways that we find to fix sidewalks and deal with that infrastructure. You know, we're here on November eighth, 2010. We're not doing the 2012 budget right now. We're doing a part of it, and we're trying to put a line in concrete that says that we want two hundred and ten thousand dollars put towards sidewalks. It's not going to solve every other city problem here. Some of it will go to the general fund, because I think there was a sense that we've got other needs that we'll deal with at budget time. Counselor Earl's made an excellent point at a committee meeting of the whole, talking about his boys and how they had gone through the schools. And by the, from the time they went through kindergarten to the time they graduated from Newburyport High School, there was a lot less there there in terms of what they were getting in terms of their education. So I think there are lots of needs. This three hundred thousand or so thousand dollars is not going to solve all of those. But again, very much in keeping with Counselor Cronin, and I too would like to sleep and shower and do everything that he does. You know, we need to make a... I said something about showering and sleeping. But I, you know, if, you know, if we approve this, if we approve these two taxes, and we approve the ordinance change to two hundred and ten thousand dollars, and Mayor Holliday says, gee, I really don't want to do this, she's going to have a fight on her hands. If in the next budget round, whoever's the mayor says, you know, I really, I don't want to fund this two hundred and ten thousand dollars, there is going to be a lot of vocal opposition from the councilors that are in office at that time. So I do see it as a way to get that sidewalk work done. A home rule petition is going to take forever, and it's not, it's not easy. So that was why this was chosen.
I just want to make it abundantly clear that the mayor is not necessarily opposed to increasing the currently sixty thousand dollars that's dedicated for sidewalk repair. She would just like to do it as part of the budget process. Given the possibility of nine Cs in the second half of the year, reduction of local aid, it's just a feeling of the mayor's office that would be fiscally irresponsible at this point in time of the year to dedicate two hundred and ten thousand dollars or commit to a number at this point in time. But she's certainly open to having the conversation about increasing to sixty thousand.
Counselor Herzog.
Thank you, Mr. President. On the issue of sidewalks, I, Counselor Connell must have read my mind, and what you just said echoed it as well. As I stand here, I bear, Mr. President, I do not know how I'm going to vote on the motion on the floor. I thank Counselor Hardquest for sharing her numbers and various sentiments expressed from Plum Island residents, and I thank Allison Trumper for the packet here of names and addresses and various comments. I too did a little informal survey via email over the weekend, much smaller numbers, while twenty-two people did say that they favored a meal tax, and seven people said that they opposed it. I also keep in the back of my mind that we also received a letter from the Board of Directors of the Chamber of Commerce, in that they also opposed it. And they, the chamber preferred, the Board of Directors preferred that if this were to go forward, it be earmarked more toward the marketing program. The primary reason why I would vote in favor of this is because when I enter a restaurant and when other people enter restaurants, we don't look at the tax. We look at the cost of the meal, if we're looking at anything. Maybe what the meal is. We're not looking at the tax. And maybe we're looking at the tax when we get the bill, maybe we're not. The primary reason why I wouldn't vote against this, why I wouldn't vote for this, is because approximately ninety percent of the property taxes that the city receives already come from residents. I think it's like eighty-six percent a couple years ago from the assessors office. So I don't know. I don't know how I'm going to vote. I thank the councilors for their thoughts. And I await maybe further comments.
Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't look at what the tax is when I walk into a restaurant. The restaurant owner has to raise their prices to pay this tax. The restaurant owner has to raise prices... The restaurant owner has to raise prices to offset an addition to their taxes. The restaurant owner has to suffer another competitive blow, because they have to raise their prices to offset this tax. Because we don't change our buying habits, they change our pricing. When they ring it up, it's a different number, it's a different number, it's more money, they're charging us more. I heard, we have a lot of needs in this city, we have a lot of wants in this city, and what we need to do is prioritize what's important to the people in this city before we decide what our needs are. One thing that really concerns me about what's before us is we're talking about better than tripling the amount of money that we spend on sidewalk repair as an earmark, and we're being told, "Well, I'm not comfortable doing that, you can't just do it, and I'm not going to commit to it at this time, but go ahead and give us more money in the general fund." We went from $30,000 to $60,000 because we saw a critical need for sidewalk infrastructure, and yet what happened was, we found out quickly that we simply don't have the people to do the work at DPW. The maker of this motion before us told us that we have half as many DPW workers as we did 20 years ago, and we expect to do more sidewalk repair without people. So what we're doing here is solving the problem by throwing other people's money at the problem, instead of actually looking at the fact that we don't have the people to do the work that's necessary. If we want to prioritize sidewalks, we get Chapter 90 money every year, and we resurface roads, it's for roads and sidewalks. Why are we not therefore earmarking $200,000 of our Chapter 90 money if we care so deeply and compassionately about the sidewalks? And I use those sidewalks every night, and Councilor Herzog will be comforted to know that I bring my little doggy bag with me so I don't get a $100 fine for it. I never put it in the municipal trash can, except the one that's properly marked on the rail trail. There comes a point when the host can no longer sustain those that live off it. Perhaps this meals tax, rooms tax, isn't the straw that breaks the camel's back, perhaps the alcohol tax was, I don't know, I don't know, I just, there's a philosophical point in my mind that says, before we continue to add to the burden of the taxpayer, we really have to analyze what it is that's important for us to do, not what we want, but what we need to do to get a fair return for the money we take. If anybody's going to suggest, and it's implied certainly, that we're going to divest the need for property tax, that we taxpayers are going to get a break next year in our property tax, even though the value of our properties has decreased, I mean, nobody's house is worth what it was three years ago, how many of you saw a decline in your tax bill in the last three years, your property tax bills? That's not what's going to happen. Adding another $300,000 is not going to forestall the continued 2.5% annual increase in the real cash value that you pay to the city for your property tax, that's real, that's real. And if there's a way, trust me, that we can find to reevaluate our homes by some new magical formula, as opposed to what, you know, industrial park formulas are, we'll continue to pay more. So tax if you will, I won't.
Councilor Earl.
It was said earlier that we will, or I will pass this because I can. Actually, I'll vote yes, because I see no alternative. Everyone says, "Let's find alternative streams of revenue," and it sounds great during the election time, it sounds good when we form committees, but nothing ever comes of it, except this item, and a couple of other items that we will be voting on. In all fairness to my fellow councillor from Low Street, he often at budget times, when we sit in this room alone, maybe the press is here and department heads are here, he asks for the most cuts. I probably ask for the second most, year to year, but the council has no appetite for cuts. In fact, if you talk about cutting the school, what happens? That night, that budget night, where no one else would show up, the room is full to advocate against cutting that. When we cut the fire, what happens? There's advocacy to not cut that, there's advocacy to not cut line items, and then in the very next conversation I hear, "But our sidewalks are falling apart." What do you want? I can't not cut and add services. For nine years, I've been sitting in this budget, in budget process, and that's all I've ever heard, "Let's not cut specific programs, but let's add services." Where's that coming from? This is where it has to come from. Unless someone tonight can give me an alternative revenue source, I will vote yes on this, I'll vote yes on that. I'll say, "Let's put this down, let's see an alternative revenue source that does not penalize somebody."
Councilor Alex.
As I said earlier, there is an alternative revenue source called paid parking, and that is probably inevitably going to happen. So there is a lot of money coming in the form of paid parking, and it's the tourists that pay it, people eating at the restaurants pay it, people that go downtown pay it. So there's another revenue source we haven't had before coming here. I'd like to know how much that is, and where we're going to use it, before I increase the meals tax now, without knowing those kind of things. Thank you.
Councilor Alex.
Thank you. Just to revisit my concern initially, to address Councilor Jones' suggestion, I would very much like to earmark Chapter 90 money to be able to designate it towards sidewalk use, but I felt that because the council was, you know, kind of, you know, we're putting our necks out on the lines, taking the initiative to vote on a hotel meals tax. And I felt that if we're willing to do that and be the symbol of the tax raisers, in turn, I want a tangible use of that money, that we can show city residents, yes, there's a hotel meals tax, but in turn, we can point to concrete, necessary, dire, infrastructure improvements. And I felt that was a nice compromise. We vote on it, some people aren't going to like it, some people are, but in turn, there's going to be a tangible benefit. And then the remainder, we have many, many needs, will go into the general fund. I feel that there's a lack of compromise here, and wanting it all to go into the general fund, we had many months to work out a compromise, so that the council would be interested in seeing this go through, but with something tangible in turn, because we do hear from constituents constantly about the needs, it's a safety issue, it's a property value issue, it's a tourism issue. Improving the sidewalks is a huge need, and if it happens, it lifts all ships, so I thought it was a very fair solution. And for that reason, we were the ones that were going to have to approve that, and that was our role. We don't typically have a role in designing the budget, but we're being asked specifically to do this, and that was why I wanted funds designated for that purpose.
Councilor Ron.
Councilor Alex just stole the word I was looking for, and thank you for that, and that was compromise. I was, I was, I still am, looking for a compromise in this city, in this chamber, and in that corner office, that we can do something that's good for the residents. It was talked early that a meals tax is an optional, it's an optional tax, you don't have to go out to eat. I go out to eat quite frequently, as you can see by my girth standing here, and I will continue to do so. All taxes are troublesome, it's much better to spread this out to visitors of this community, and people that chose, choose to go downtown, and maybe go downtown by walking, which I like to do. And one of the historical problems with infrastructure in Newburyport is we get grants, and we build things, and we move on to the next grant, and to build the next thing, and we do nothing to repair what's behind us. And I'm just asking one last time for us to do the right thing for the residents in Newburyport.
I have a compromise.
I come with a compromise. Well, the mayor doesn't want to commit a certain amount of money to one use. Her idea, and she's transmitted it through our update to you, over the course of the weekend, would be set up a reserve for appropriation count, which we could put 50% of the tax in, and then would have to come back to the council for approval to spend it for a particular project or initiative. So rather than send 150 to sidewalks, 150 to go to reserve for appropriation, at which point in time, the council and the mayor's office can work together to find its use, given that the need for, will certainly change year to year. So I don't know if the council wants to consider that as an alternative.
Reserve for appropriation, how many votes do we need to give that money out of? That account? Two, three?
Two, three. Okay.
The money would have to come into a line item within the general fund budget, and then from that line item would have to go back into the reserve for appropriation fund.
So if people wondered, that said they want money for sidewalks?
It would have to come out of the reserve for appropriation, and that could be any number that I agree on.
Thank you. Any else? Councilor Earl.
Thank you, Mr. President. With all due respect to Councilor Earls, he says that he does make suggestions for a lot of cuts during the budget, and I've been through three of them, and he does make some, but Councilor Jones makes the most, and I make the most of the seconds. And when you say that we can't cut services, and we can't cut these people, let me remind you that the first line item on the budget is city council appropriation of what we get paid. And for the last three years, Councilor Jones has made a recommendation of a 10% cut, second by myself, dead issue after that. So there's a, we could do a hell of a lot better than what we do now, when it comes to budget season, and so I don't really go by with the services, we can't cut this, we can't cut that, we're down to minimal staff. We have a responsibility to the city to live within our means, and we don't just keep shoving a tax down everybody's throat, we need to do our due diligence and do what's right for the community. And, you know, 400-plus signatures, that stands for community, as far as I know, unless it's any different. Just so you don't know, I'm going to be voting no on this.
Councilor Jones.
Probably the most entrenched in my position here, and yet, I hear, I hear room, and I think that there's a number of my colleagues that might be looking for that room, and I'd suggest that there may be a deal to be struck with the mayor's office, listening to the mayor's aide, and I wonder how many of you would be more comfortable with another two weeks to structure that compromise? I would, if somebody put it forward, I would support a vote to table, so that you might have more time. I'm concerned that you're all here trying to make a decision based on what we had as flawed assumptions coming in here, and whether or not you need more reassurance to feel that you can get where you want to go. It's not going to change my mind, trust me, but it's something to think about, there's still, there's still an opportunity to step back from the brink here, if you'd like.
I don't have a structured this question, it may be quite a problematic.
We need a simple majority to pass this, if it is to pass. What is the majority we need to create a reserve for appropriations? Is it a simple majority or a super majority?
It's a simple majority.
Okay.
Right.
And then, just a little... Right. But then it would take a super majority, or two-thirds of the members, to get money out of the reserve for appropriations. Just want to be clear on that. Thank you.
Per chance.
That should be done at the last meeting in November, the first meeting in December.
So if that means, I'm just trying to...
Ask a question.
If we don't pass this, say we chamber this through the 29th, and it passes the 29th, and then we set the, and the budget's already set, say, before then, is it too late for this year to get money back?
If you get a portion of it. When exactly it went into effect? Probably the last quarter.
Okay. Thank you. Councilor Cameron.
Mr. President, if we were to create a reserve for appropriation tonight, would we need to table this current motion and do that first? If so, I'd be willing to make a motion for that reserve for appropriation account.
I'd have to ask Mr. Scott, would we, would we need two weeks to set up the reserve for appropriations? Can we do it? No, we could do that right away, it's just, it's up to the council.
The council?
It's not on the agenda, but if you suspend the rules and approve it, then...
Suspend the rules, two weeks, and then the second meeting, and the next meeting.
I'll take a break, is that what you want to do, and decide what we want to do?
Take a conference.
It seems like organized confusion.
Take a five-minute break.
Coming back after our five-minute break at times 10, but we are back, so. I was always accused of not telling time, I guess I can't now, so. We will now continue, and Councilor Cameron.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to table the motion on the floor.
I'll take that motion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Can we table to get both for it?
Councilor Cameron. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and consider a late-file order.
Second. Read the late-file order, please.
The order would be in order to establish a reserve for appropriation account for repair of existing city-owned sidewalks with an amount equal to 50% of the annual meals tax revenue.
Is there any discussion? Suspend the rules? Do this as a late file? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
No.
One no? Councilor Cameron.
Mr. President, motion to approve an order to, and I'll read it slowly for the typist. This would be in order to establish a reserve for appropriation account for repair of existing city-owned sidewalks with an amount equal to 50% of the annual meals tax revenue.
Amount equal to?
With an amount equal to 50%.
The annual meals tax revenue.
Correct.
Councilor Jones.
I have a question on the wording, the annual meals tax, and how can we reference, there is, there is a meals tax, we are proposing to add, and how is that term, so that we need to distinguish between what the meals tax is that's assessed in the city, and what we are earmarking for city-owned? I believe, I need to, I need to know that we're identifying the .75 proposed, as opposed to the meals tax in total.
If we could modify the order, just to put annual local meals tax revenue?
Local meals tax. Two seconds. Thank you. Could you read the order once he has it? Motion to establish a reserve for appropriation account for repair of existing owned sidewalks with an amount equal to 50% of the annual meals tax revenue.
Local meals tax.
Say that again.
Local before meals tax, local meals tax.
Thank you.
That refers to .75.
Are we saying, does it take out the word annual, or is it?
No, keep annual.
Annual local meals tax.
Councilor Cronin.
Mr. Jones, I just think it should be city-owned sidewalks.
Yeah, I didn't like existing owned.
Oh, correct, yes.
City-owned.
Repair of existing owned, city-owned.
Is it existing city-owned?
Do you mind if I permission to look over his shoulder?
Most people have it, so.
You shut up.
You wouldn't believe his typing, it's like shorthand.
They don't know that.
You can do that.
Okay.
To establish a reserve for appropriation account for repair of existing city-owned sidewalks with an amount equal to 50% of the annual local meals tax... sidewalks with an amount equal to the annual local meals tax revenue. That's correct.
Anyone else wanna, we read again? Counselor Harrison, go ahead.
Yeah, just on, on the rewriting, correct me if I'm mistaken, but would it be meals tax revenue or meals excise revenue or does it make a difference?
Considering the meals order.
The original order said.
Excise.
Except provisions of chapter 64 ALs section 2A to impose a local meals excise. Wanna reflect that?
Sure.
An amount equal to 50% of the annual local meals excise.
Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think we're demonstrating for ourselves and everybody else the, the risk at, at governance in haste. And this is exactly what I feared. And I'm uncomfortable with the wording, I'm uncomfortable trying to put this together and I'd ask again, somebody stop us.
Counselor.
Can I just briefly inquire if Counselor Jones will elaborate on the concern in terms of the, the language? I'm assuming that you're talking about a certain number needing to be inserted, but if you had something specific in mind or a specific concern?
I think the fact that we have a question and that we're fighting, not fighting, but we're certainly deliberating at how we should cobble this together gives me pause. And that the devil is in the details and laws are a very permanent thing and legislation in haste is a scary thought for me because, because I've been involved in the litigation that the wording of laws leaves us a legacy of expense, expenses. Is this right? I don't know. Is there something that would make me feel better? Perhaps, perhaps some pause and deliberation. But what we're doing right now, trying to word this together by committee, makes me nervous, makes me nervous because it's a law. It's, once we vote on this, it's what we live with and everyone's interpretation of what we may or may not have meant or how those words are interpreted by those who read it in time to come is gonna have bearing. So maybe this is a simple thing, maybe it isn't.
Counselor Harrison.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd echo Counselor Jones and in fact to echo an earlier point of his from earlier tonight, we can put in as much money as we want to sidewalk rehabilitation, who's doing the work and when are they doing it?
I don't know that anybody can answer that, but we know this for sure, there's no money, there's no work done. I'd like to ask Mr. Schoolers to respond. How durable is the creation of a reserve for appropriation account? Is it from this point forward forever or is it annually renewed?
It's a special revenue account which stays into existence until the council and the mayor decide to dissolve it. At which time, any monies that are left in that account go into the general fund.
Good. Thank you. Any else? Want you to read it once more, please.
This motion to approve an order which states as follows, to establish a reserve for appropriation account for the repair of existing city-owned sidewalks with an amount equal to 50% of the annual local meals excise.
Roll call.
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counselor Darvin?
No.
Counselor Earls?
Yes.
Counselor Harquist?
Yes.
Counselor Harrison?
No.
Counselor Hutchinson?
No.
Counselor Ives?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
No.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Seven yes, four no. As far as I know, it's a majority vote establishing a reserve account. Motion passes.
Counselor Cameron?
Mr. President, I'd like to remove from the table the order on local meals excise.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
Mr. President, motion to approve local meals excise order.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
This motion approved that the city council of the city of Newburyport accepts chapter 64 ALs section 2A to impose a local meals excise. Counselor Cronin, I'm sorry, Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counselor Darvin?
No.
Counselor Earls?
Yes.
Counselor Harquist?
Yes.
Counselor Harrison?
No.
Counselor Hutchinson?
No.
Counselor Ives?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
No.
Counselor O'Brien?
Yes.
Seven to four, as before.
Anything else?
Counselor Cameron, yes, unfortunately, I've got several more things, Mr. President. Motion to remove local room occupancy excise.
Second motion. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
Motion to approve local room occupancy increase to a rate of 6%.
Second. Discussion? Counselor Jones?
I'd like to take this opportunity to remind the city that there is one hotel at this time. And for three years, I tried to get 15-minute parking in front of the building so that they could have guests stop and drop their bags and not have it tied up with full-time parking for, for example, city hall employees right at the front door of the only hotel in the city. Took a while to get it done and we rewarded that hotel by piling 20-foot-tall hills of dirt where the 15-minute parking was for a year. We placed porta-potties at the front door of a place that was trying to get flagged a four-star hotel. We cost them by some estimates as much as 40% of their business while we beautified the park at their expense. Throughout an entire winter season, they looked out at hills of dirt, construction debris. So by all means, let's pile on and hit 'em with the tax. Haven't we done enough?
Further discussion?
Actually reads as follows, that the city council of the city of Newburyport amend its local room occupancy excise under GL chapter 64G section 3A to the rate of 6%. That's as originally submitted in January.
Was it now 4%?
Mm-hmm.
Four. Any, Counselor Harrison?
Thank you. Actually, to that point that you just asked, Mr. President, the local excise tax is 4%. The state excise for occupancy is 5.7%. So if we pass this tonight, we're actually talking about 11.7% tax for anyone who stays in any, in any building that rents out rooms for $15 or more a day for a minimum of 90 consecutive days or less. That's the way the state regulation is. This is an 11.7%. I actually did some research through both emails I received and on my own research. The city of New York, approximately 14%. Perception means everything and I've heard from many of my constituents who are both in favor and opposed, perception means everything. I can't vote for this.
Thank you. Any else? Roll call, please.
This motion to approve the room occupancy rate to 6%. Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Cronin?
No.
Counselor Darvin?
No.
Counselor Earls?
Yes.
Counselor Harrison?
No.
Counselor Hutchinson?
No.
Counselor Ives?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
No.
Counselor O'Brien?
No.
Anything else, Counselor?
That's good for me.
No, uh, damage to no, no? We'll have a nice meeting. Why do we need rules? My head?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I have some very good news to kind of chip the meeting. If that's possible.
Keep up the streak.
Joining Ed Mett and we have some good news from the schools. We were told the Best of Boston magazine listed Newburyport in the top 10% of the best public high schools and I have the article here with number 32. Lot of high-power schools ahead of us here, but we're doing very well. We're doing, part of this ranking was MCAS scores, which relates to my second point, where the high school, grade 10 in particular, 70% of the high school, grade 10 scored as advanced in the math MCAS testing, which helped get to standing here. So it's a lot of success at the high school for the MCAS and what the schools are doing. So it's seen a lot of success and we should be very proud of where the schools are in relation to other communities in the state. Excuse me for reading, I just can't remember all of this, limited memory capacity. Education jobs fund grant money from the federal government will be used to reinstate the police school resource officer, which was actually part of the police budget that was cut on the city side, not on the schools. I just want people to understand that that was cut and the schools are gonna add it back in with the grant money. So schools wanted to let us know that. I'd also mentioned that we might meet on November 17th or 18th as a full council and full school committee. They decided to postpone that to closer to budget season at the beginning of next year. Now, what they wanna do instead is invite us to the December 6th school committee meeting where the superintendent is gonna outline his entry plan and go over his presentation for, about the school. So he'll be seeing invitation to the December 6th school committee meeting as opposed to us meeting next week. I just wanted to bring up that as well. Thank you.
License and permits?
Nothing to report, Mr. President.
Neighborhood city services?
Nothing at all.
Finding involved?
Nothing.
Public safety?
One thing, Mr. President. I'd like to take out ordinance number four dated October 12th, 2010.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both?
Mr. President, this, this ordinance that's in front of you has been amended slightly by the public safety committee. But basically, what we are doing is bringing some relief to the residents of Back Bay, which is a combination of Ward 3 and Ward 2. Counselor Earls was generous enough to co-sponsor this ordinance. This brings relief in some, in some way to the migration of MBTA Parkers that were referred to earlier that went to Parker Street. Then the, the city had to react to a, a safety concern on Parker Street in the previous council session. And unfortunately, many of these vehicles just migrated further into the neighborhoods and are in the, the Back Bay neighborhood. I'm not going to get into the minutia. Again, we all heard some of the horror stories that are going on in those streets. What we are proposing quite simply is to request two-hour parking on Cherry Street, Hill Street and Burcher Street with a resident component in which residents are allowed to park on, on their streets, making them much safer for their children. There's no, there's no sidewalks, I don't wanna bring up that word again, but there, there aren't any sidewalks in that area.
Yet.
Uh, yeah, no, there aren't any sidewalks on the, anyhow. So what we are looking to do is to give some relief to the, to the traffic and the congestion and some of the safety concerns in that area.
Counselor Earl?
Speak to the Temple of Spring, which has also mentioned this ordinance. These streets are included in what previous councils have acknowledged as the business district, meaning that they fall between State Street and Federal Street and that these streets are allowed to petition, basically a counselor, to bring forth the residential parking permit. Remember, this is not residential only, it's still two-hour parking for anybody who wants to park all weekdays and all weekend and all weekends. It just allows for two hours where residents can have a sticker and park there indefinitely. So I appreciate a yes vote.
So let me get this, it's a two-hour parking?
For non-sticker.
For non-sticker. So residents can park, there's no time limit, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Counselor Harrison? Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just two comments, if I may, or a question and a comment. Question is, Counselor Earls just mentioned, if I heard him correctly, between zone one, between state and federal? Yet this says fair and federal. Just, and, okay.
Fair is between state and federal, so anything that would be between fair and federal would be between state and federal. Entire zone is state to federal.
But the street is dotted on Temple of Spring, so.
And just a point number two, I don't know if this is a scrivviness error or not, but I see it actually says an ordinance entitled an ordnane. So I don't know if that makes a difference if we approve this.
Yes, I wanted to be ordnane.
As opposed to ordained?
Like ordinance. Just one vote.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Counselor Jones?
I remind the council that we acted swiftly to relieve the burden of Mark Ritchie and we displaced that burden clearly in the Back Bay. And we promised them when we did this that we would take action. Now we're at an important time, so this is, this is us carrying through on what we said we would do six months ago. It was good enough for Mark Ritchie, certainly good enough for tax-paying residents of the city.
Any further discussion? Counselor Jones?
I remind the council that we acted swiftly to relieve the burden of Mark Ritchie and we displaced that burden clearly in the Back Bay. And we promised them when we did this that we would take action. Now we're at an important time, so this is, this is us carrying through on what we said we would do six months ago. It was good enough for Mark Ritchie, certainly good enough for tax-paying residents of the city.
Any further discussion? Counselor Jones?
I remind the council that we acted swiftly to relieve the burden of Mark Ritchie and we displaced that burden clearly in the Back Bay. And we promised them when we did this that we would take action. Now we're at an important time, so this is, this is us carrying through on what we said we would do six months ago. It was good enough for Mark Ritchie, certainly good enough for tax-paying residents of the city.
Any further discussion?
No residents.
All in favor?
Aye.
All both? Any else coming up? Any votes?
This is gonna be the quickest roll call, ordinance number four. Counselor Cameron?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Cronin?
Yes.
Counselor Darvin?
Yes.
Counselor Earls?
Yes.
Counselor Harrison?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
And Counselor O'Brien, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Didn't change?
No, it didn't.
Anything else? Public utilities?
I don't know.
Afraid now?
No, sir.
Also, she's left, but I was Katie Charles last night coming up, I think she prepared fair to the council and wish her well in her new job.
What kind of book she writes tomorrow?
Right. Take the most of your journey.
All in.
Thank you. All in. Thank you.